Good evening. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 8th, 2022, 23, 2023? Dr. Lu, second Miss Napolitano, any discussion?
Turn up the sound.
All in favor? Seven, nothing. Good evening and welcome. Congra- Good eve- whoa. Good evening and welcome. Congratulations to all the terrific kids that we will celebrate tonight. You are a reminder that so much good happens in this district, and I'm glad that you're here. The last two weeks have been nothing short of a travesty within our district. Just a few minutes in any one of the many community groups on social media will show anyone how divided this community is. I sit here tonight to remind you that our children are watching. They are watching and listening, and they will emulate what they see. My own children are watching and listening. They are watching as they read articles and posts that make them fear for the future of their own education, and they are watching as neighbors tear apart neighbors. I have been a resident of East Meadow my entire life. I believe in the good of our community. I believe in the humanity that lives here. We are better than this division. Previous discussion and correspondence have outlined what DEI is not. Tonight, I want to tell you a little bit about what DEI is. DEI is the fourth grade boy who sees himself in an illustration about a Nigerian immigrant who becomes a chess champion. DEI is the Greek Orthodox student who doesn't worry about a test being given while she is absent celebrating Christmas in January. DEI is the child who comes to school hungry and being fed by the school so that they have the capacity to learn. And DEI is the LGBTQ student being accepted by their peers instead of being ostracized. That is DEI. DEI is not taught, rather it is lived. DEI has been happening here in East Meadow long before an acronym that was politicized. It has been a part of East Meadow through the amazing and inclusive teachers and administrators who call East Meadow home. Our teachers are fantastic, and we thank them for their devotion to all of the students in East Meadow. Anyone who tries to insinuate that DEI is racist or sexual should be ashamed of themselves. While all of this is going on, the Board of Education has been hard at work doing the business of the district. I can't thank the six people I share this dais with enough for their hard work and dedication to the children of East Meadow. To all six of you, thank you. To the community, we hear you, and we hear how frustrated you are, and we understand. Tonight, we will vote on a resolution to appoint an investigator from Gersio &amp; Gersio to conduct an investigation into the Project Veritas video and statements that appear in it. To be clear, aside from this investigation, the district does no business with Gersio &amp; Gersio and selected them because they are completely impartial and independent party to this matter and have expertise in education law. This Board of Ed has reacted swiftly and expediently to address this matter in the most transparent way possible out in the public arena so that our community can see and understand. Thank you. Are there any other board announcements? I guess we'll go down. Is that easy, Ms. Whitman?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm sure you remember the words you heard me say last year. Children need to be taught how to think, not what to think. That is what I believe, and I stand by my words. I was shocked and disheartened when I viewed the video, and in Dr. Casamento's own words, I heard him say that his politics influenced grading potential hires, weeding out anyone with conservative values. I am a Republican conservative. I took offense to the notion that having conservative values was unacceptable. We all have the right to our own political beliefs, and there's nothing wrong with debate on various issues. He stated that he encourages GEI to be taught covertly. Why? All of our children deserve to be heard and accepted and proud of who they are. Why does anything need to be taught covertly and not disclosed to the parents? He inferred he inferred that he doesn't want to draw the ire of conservatives. Nothing should be taught to our children ever in our schools covertly and without parental consent. Parents have the right to full transparency regarding the curriculum. Why can't we encourage our children to find the commonalities they all have instead of the differences which only breeds division? If we peel back our skin, we're all the same underneath. We are a respectful community comprised of many faiths. The values and morals your children learn are taught in the home by you, the parents, period. That is your God-given right. I have made my feelings known to administration and my fellow board members. Our discussions have been respectful and thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman.
Please be assured that I heard you, and I hear you, and I will and always will be an advocate on your behalf. And I congratulate our terrific kids this evening because all of our children are terrific kids.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. Ms. Dr. Lu?
Good evening. My husband and I moved here 21 years ago because we saw what a strong community East Meadow is. And I say "is" because despite the division, I still believe in our community, in the way we help each other when needed and come together in difficult times as we did in the aftermath of Sandy. People have always disagreed, but at the core, we all feel strongly about our children and about our community. And when emotions are high, it's easy to rush to judgment. It is for this exact reason that we agree with those who have called for an independent investigation of hiring practices. I ask the community to please allow this investigation to occur and to listen to the facts rather than supposition or rumors. Anyone who knows me more than having had a brief conversation with me knows that I have dedicated my life to education and the well-being of others. My colleagues on the board are equally dedicated. And while you may disagree with the actions of a person, the truth is that politics do not belong in education. Despite the lies that you've been told, no one sitting at this table believes that politics belong in education. We will continue to strive to provide a top-notch education while looking out for the community's fiduciary interests. Because that is the job of the Board of Education, I implore us all as residents of this beautiful community to look past the ulterior motives of others and to focus on a politics-free education that delivers the mandated curriculum that New York State has provided. Thank you and welcome to our terrific kids.
Good evening, everyone. I know that we can all agree the last couple of weeks have been difficult and challenging. The thought, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything, has been on my mind quite a bit lately. I know, as some of you know, I have been involved in the East Meadow School District for many years. I've worn many hats, including PTA presidents and vice presidents in many of our schools. I've chaired many committees. My first committee was the PTA liaison for Barnum Woods, and that was 20 years ago this year. That was a very, very dark time in our school district. I have witnessed great strides since then moving and moving the district forward, always to benefit the students. The focus should always be on the students where they are the ones that should receive the benefits of any and all initiatives. We represent the Board of Education, but we also wear other hats. Mom, dad, friend, neighbor, taxpayer, volunteer, community member. I know I can say with the utmost confidence, my fellow trustees and myself love our community, as you all do. We chose to live here and raise our families. We will get through this together as we have before. We will continue to grow, and we will continue to be better from it. I would like to thank Mrs. Baruch for being our leader. Her natural ability to remain calm, focused, mindful, and thoughtful in recent weeks shows her strength and commitment to our students and our community. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Because we did not coordinate this, I apologize if some of this is a repetition of things that everybody from Nancy all the way down said, but I do feel it is important. Before I talk about the situation, I do want to start on a really positive note. In the last few weeks, I had the opportunity to attend several different unbelievable productions in this school district. And I think it is really appropriate to congratulate so many kids and teachers on amazing work. Clark recently had their show Woodland, The Music Man Junior, was phenomenal. Congratulations to everybody in that. This past weekend, this past weekend on Saturday night, I had the fortune to see guys and dolls at East Meadow High School. And I have to tell you that that is exactly the kind of moment that we all needed in this district this week of happy, of positive, and of amazing talent. So congratulations to everybody from East Meadow High School. Finally, to the students of Footloose, I know how hard you worked, and congratulations to the Clark High School production as well. So to all of our thespians out there, excellent job. So I do want to just add a couple of words from my heart. People are angry and hurt. I can understand that. It seems that anger, though, has turned to fear, which has led some, not all, just some, to hate. And these forces seem to have consumed our community in the last two weeks. I've never seen so much division and cruelty in our town before, and I've lived here my whole life. Please, the cruelty needs to stop. What kind of example are we setting for our children? We are your neighbors, your coworkers, even your friends. We live here with you and pay the same taxes. My children play with your children. We are also hurt terribly by the current situation. I sympathize with your concerns. I care deeply about this community. Like my fellow board members, I've devoted years of blood, sweat, and tears to the oversight of this school district in hopes that it improves and it grows. We have made amazing progress over the years, giving our hearts and souls to volunteer as a team for the kids and taxpayers. This board works well together as a team. Every single member at this table here tonight has conducted himself or herself with professionalism, even when we disagree. And I have to tell you, we do disagree at times, and that's fine. Consensus building is hard work, but we show respect for each other's opinions, which are quite varied and much more nuanced than some people will have you think. Without knowing us personally, I have heard so many speculated, so many speakers speculate, often incorrectly, on our own political opinions because of factors like education, or race, or religion, or gender. I have to agree. Politics has no place here, none. It needs to stay out of our schools. I must say I must say that I can't condone the words I heard on that video about politics and hiring. They certainly do not reflect my views. They are not what I want for myself. They are not what I want for my community. Most importantly, they are not what I want for my two little children. I am choosing to raise my children in my hometown because of the wonderful educational opportunities here and because of the beautiful diversity. That diversity includes religion, race, ethnicity, and all of the differences that make East Meadow interesting and fantastic. But that also includes political and ideological differences. I do not want my kids growing up in a bubble. They should be exposed to a variety of viewpoints and get to know and befriend people who think differently from them. As a government and history teacher in another school district, I always challenge my students to look at all sides of an issue and to form their own opinions without any influence. My professional colleagues do the same, and we foster a sense of respect among ourselves and our students. I have met incredible East Meadow and Clark graduates, and they seem to be well-rounded, well-read, solid, critical thinkers. I have never sat in on a teacher hiring committee in East Meadow, but I am hopeful that political affiliation will never be a factor in choosing our professional staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Eckers. Dr. Card?
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to follow up on a question asked at the March 8th board meeting related to a proposed facility change at McVay. We are moving forward on our approved proposition to expand McVay Elementary School by three classrooms. The facilities needs assessment was completed after information was received from the building principal in December of 2022. We are currently in the preliminary review process with the State Education Department. The next step is the full architectural review, which will permit us to move forward with our bid process. The State Education Department is currently running at approximately 42 weeks after completion of their preliminary review to provide their determination on approval or rejection of the project. The second question related to newly arriving students once the year begins. New funds do not materialize when changes occur to our student enrollment throughout the course of the school year. New unbudgeted funds are not added after the fact to any budget area in our schools. The only exception occurs during the summer when we need to break a section, usually in kindergarten, since we cannot anticipate how many Ks will enroll by the start of the new school year. We generally establish three contingency positions to address this scenario should it occur. Tonight, we plan to wrap up our month-long budget development process with two presentations. The first on instruction and staffing, followed by a presentation on revenues, after which we will ask the Board of Education to consider adopting the proposed 2023-2024 budget for our district. Our next Board of Education meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023. Since this is the last board meeting before spring break, I would like to wish our students, faculty, and staff a well-deserved spring break that is set to begin at the end of the school day on Wednesday, April 5th, through Friday, April 14th. To those who celebrate, happy Passover, happy Easter, and Ramadan Mubarak. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Card. At this time, would somebody like to make a motion to move Terrific Kids up on the agenda so that our students can be recognized, and then if their parents so choose, they can go home and celebrate with some Carvel? Ms. Napolitano, second Miss Whitman, any discussion? Nope. All in favor? Seven, nothing.
At this time, I would like to introduce to the podium Mrs. Krug, president of the Kiwanis, the East Meadow Kiwanis, that is.
If you don't mind. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Dr. Card and the board for inviting me here this evening. My name is Diane Krug. I'm the president of East Meadow Kiwanis. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with Kiwanis, Kiwanis is an international service organization that has roots in local communities around the world. There are a few extensions of our Kiwanis club at each school level, including Builders Club in our middle schools, Key Club in our high schools, and K Kids in our elementary schools. We support many causes relative to the children of our community, including, but not limited to, back-to-school backpacks, holiday food baskets and gift drives, summer camps, excuse me, and high school scholarship awards. We also support Terrific Kids program. As a mom of three and a grandmother of eight so far, I obviously think that kids are pretty terrific. Congratulations to tonight's recipients. You are all terrific. Your parents and all the adults in the room are very proud of you. You set a good example for all of us.
Thank you, Mrs. Krug. And at this time, I would like to call Mr. Lethbridge, principal of Woodland Middle School, to the podium to present his Terrific Kids, assisted by Dr. Loer from Clark Middle School, who is here representing the principal of Clark Middle School, Mrs. Stacy Breslin.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize our terrific kids from both middle schools. We'll start with Woodland. For the month of December, Grade 6, Bianca Charlisse. Students, when you come up, you'll get your certificate, and then you're going to go through the reception line with the Board of Education. Evan Glover. Grade 7 Kayla Galizara. Also, Grade 7 Samuel Grant. For Grade 8 Sofia Nosa-Ravia. For Grade 6, for the month of January, Annalise Blakeman. And Patrick Keen. Grade 7 Ariana Fasenda. And Mario Martinez Bonilla. Grade 8 Zoe Q. And Eric Arius Duran. And for the month of February, Grade 6 Rebecca Simon. And for Grade 8 Ella Alexander. Those are the Terrific Kids from Woodland Middle School. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Gustavo Lor, and I am here on behalf of Clark Middle School to announce our Terrific Kids. For the month of December, Grade 6 Kennedy Charles. From Grade 7 Masha Balensag. Grade 8 Thomas Abel. For the month of January, Grade 6 Simone Fonte. Grade 7 Michael Morales Montesinos. Grade 8 Delilah Gravagna. For the month of February, Grade 6 Zainab Kakmak. Grade 7 Francesca Martiniello. For Grade 8 Taran Deamico. And Matthew Kenyonius. Keep up the hard work, Terrific Kids. On behalf of a grateful school district, I'd like to thank the parents for bringing your kids here tonight to be recognized as Terrific Kids. And to the kids, keep up the good work. You're the reason why we're here. Have a great night, Terrific Kids. And parents, you could now go take your kids out for Carvel. On behalf of a grateful school district, I'd like to thank the parents for bringing your kids here tonight to be recognized as Terrific Kids. And to the kids, keep up the good work. You're the reason why we're here. Have a great night, Terrific Kids. And parents, you could now go take your kids out for Carvel. There are snacks outside that are being provided by our PTA, so please grab yourself something
On behalf of a grateful school district, I'd like to thank the parents for bringing your kids here tonight to be recognized as Terrific Kids. And to the kids, keep up the good work. You're the reason why we're here. Have a great night, Terrific Kids. And parents, you could now go take your kids out for Carvel. There are snacks outside that are being provided by our PTA, so please grab yourself something and enjoy.
As a reminder, the first commentary period is for items on the agenda only. The Board of Education elects to have two public commentary periods, the first being for items on the agenda, the second being for any item that pertains to the school community. We have 30 minutes for each public commentary period, and each speaker is invited to speak for three minutes. We unfortunately cannot allow you to speak further because we do have a lot of cards. Should there be any extra time in the public commentary period and you wish to continue, we would invite you back up for an additional three minutes. Also, as a reminder, this is not a period of back and forth. The Board is here to listen to you, and as such, we really won't be able to answer questions. But as you saw, we will follow up with questions, either via email if necessary or at the following Board meeting. So the first person I have is Ethan Mann.
Hello, sorry about that. Can everybody hear me? To the Board, thank you for letting us speak. When I watched the Project Veritas video on the day it was released, I heard a lot of things that concerned me, just like they've concerned my neighbors. And over the last two weeks, the town Facebook groups have been exploding with shock and outrage over what appears to be clearly said in that video. Dr. Casamento uses sexuality to connect with students. The district, and in fact, most school districts in Nassau, are implementing programs or practices in secret and purposely withholding information from parents. Dr. Casso has made sure that no teacher or administrator candidate who is politically conservative is hired by our district. Since then, as all of us have, I've had the opportunity to watch that video again and again. And I'm here to share my opinion, my conclusion, that every one of these very large, various concerns that I had, and every concern I've heard voiced by anyone in town, is fully explained and debunked within the 10-minute video itself. You don't even need to account for the deceptive editing and deceptive captioning. Dr. Casamento himself is clear in each of his points, if you hear his words accurately and follow the context that Dr. Casamento himself establishes. As you stated, Ms. Baruk, there's going to be an official investigation of Dr. Casamento's alleged misconduct. This is what I believe is evidence of my claims, complete with transcripts and timestamps. Now, I'm not assuming that I'm unique or special in my analysis, and I'm not assuming anything about what any individual board member interprets from this video, or what any future investigators interpret from this video. But I do have information that I believe is relevant, not only to show that Dr. Casamento says and does nothing wrong in the Veritas video, but that if Dr. Casamento did nothing wrong, well, then the district and you, the Board, have done nothing wrong. I'm hoping I can share this with the Board if it's permissible, and that if warranted, you'll make this available to whatever investigatory committee is hired and established. Is it permissible to hand this to the DAS? Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I'm going to make this announcement one time and one time only. If you choose to yell out, we're going to ask you to leave. Period. Once again, this is the final warning. We will maintain the quorum in this meeting. Everyone will be heard, but they will be heard based on the policy of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jasmine.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the Board. I'm a resident of East Meadow. I've been living here for 17 years. My son graduated East Meadow High School last year, and that one time that he experienced having a minority teacher. My daughters are on the verge of graduating East Meadow High School next year, and her two still have not seen a minority teacher. But what she, but both of my kids have seen is minority security guards. My daughter wanted to be an educator here in East Meadow, and I sent a letter to Dr. Card a couple of years ago explaining how I was in tears as a parent, how she said to me I cannot be a teacher here in a town that I'm growing up in because they would not hire me. So my question is, is there also a rubric for the Board that determine whether or not you hire a minority teacher?
Thank you, Mr. Jasmine. Ms. Schmidt? Ms. Schmidt? Nope? Diana Schmidt? Bijou?
Okay. First off, I want to thank you for preparing this evening. I have no desire to come here and attack your character or disparage, make discharging remarks. My focus is on the children and what's best for them. You guys hired District Y Search consultants at, if everyone wants to look it up, it's districtysearch.com, to find our next superintendent. Based on their biographies, they were, they either were or currently on the East Williston School Board. David Casamento came from the East Williston School Board, School District. You guys took our taxpayer money to hire former colleagues of the Assistant Superintendent to find Dr. Card's replacement. You... Oh my goodness. All right, I'm sorry. I don't think the town is going to go for Dr., for, uh, Dr. Casamento as the next superintendent. I don't think anyone here wants his friends telling us who to hire for the next superintendent. What you guys can do, let's just get all the best principals we have in East Meadow, buy test score, and have them draw straws. It's transparent, it won't waste any more of our taxpayer money. All right, I'm sorry, I got one more. You guys also bifurcated the application process for the principal position or currently on the East Williston School Board. David Casamento came from the East Williston School Board, School District. You guys took our taxpayer money to hire former colleagues of the Assistant Superintendent to find Dr. Card's replacement. You... Oh my goodness. Alright, I'm sorry. I don't think the town is gonna go for Dr., for, uh, Dr. Casamento as the next superintendent. I don't think anyone here wants his friends telling us who to hire for the next superintendent. What you guys can do, let's just get all the best principals we have in East Meadow by test score and have them draw straws. It's transparent. It won't waste any more of our taxpayer money. Alright, I'm sorry, I got one more. You guys also bifurcated the application process for the principal position at Woodland and Clark Middle Schools. Those are the same jobs. Whoever applies to Midland isn't gonna get considered for Clark. Whoever applies to Clark won't get considered for Midland. That's ridiculous. Make it a combined pool and take the best two people. We know that, we know that Midland is a more desirable position. So anyone, like, your best candidates are gonna apply there, which means that whoever gets at Clark will not, will be not as good as the people at Midland. The people at Clark, parents at Clark want the best for their kids. They should not be worse than any candidate rejected at Midland Middle School. Woodland, I'm sorry, I'm mixing things up. You guys know what I mean. Stop playing games with our kids.
Mr. Servitor? Mr. Servitor? Alright, Mr. Servitor?
How you doing? My name's Mr. Servitor. And they're not gonna answer my questions, so there's no reason for me to talk to them, but they can hear me. They changed their procedure because of me.
I'm Ben. You can return the bike now.
Mr. Servitor, you are addressing the Board of Education. You need to face the Board of Education when you do so. Thank you.
The only problem about facing the Board of Education is we get the runaround. So we're talking about the budget, right? So I'm gonna stick to what's on the agenda, because that's what we usually like. Okay, so, to have a budget, right? You need an agenda to pay for, right? And sometimes there's hidden agendas that the budget is used for, okay? So I got a couple of questions about the budget. Every year, there's a zero carryover. But we know there's money left, because you put it into the reserves without telling us. You don't let us know where that money goes. The last two years, while you've had, as Mrs. Baruch said, buckets of COVID money, right? Back in 21 of September, you don't know what to do with the buckets of money. Now, all of a sudden, we have budget adoptions in March before the state passes their budget, and we find out what we're getting in state aid. In the last two years, we got a ton of money in state aid that you never revised your budget right after that. Now we, now we have budget adoptions in March, because the money keeps coming in, okay? With all that money, right? We put it, how are we paying for the integrated co-teach? Because I see you changed for a third time now in January. Originally, Dr. Casamento and Mr. Russo said it was grant-funded. I inquired about the grant. There was no grant, right? Then you changed it after I put my lawsuit in. You changed it to foundation aid when you put out your flyer. Then you did a thing in June, right? And you said you're using American Rescue Plan money. It was part of $3.4 million, and $2.4 million was going to go for the ICT teachers, for 24 teachers. The problem is, it's 30 teachers, right? Six teachers, five schools is 30. So that's really $33 million, I'm sorry, right? Then you were gonna hire two math and two reading, three social workers, and one guidance counselor. And I'll just finish up with this. So you did a revision in January, and now you're showing you're only using $400,000 for the IC teaching. So how are we paying the other $3 million? You didn't come back and tell us you were using district funds.
Thank you, Mr. Servitor.
Just want to make sure I make a point of clarification. The Board does not adopt a revenue budget. They adopt an expense budget. That is why we are able to adopt the budget before the state actually adopts their budget. Thank you.
Ms., there's no point of interest. Ms. Davina Elliott?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for issuing the letter last week outlining the process for curriculum development and for your presentation today. When concerning that David Casamento already said he used covert tactics and took great care to lie to parents, it implies he lied to the parent representatives, i.e. the PTA Curriculum Council. They probably did not realize what they agreed to. For example, the social-emotional learning requirements. The district purchased the Universal Mosaic curriculum, which was developed by New York City. That's when the questions get into, do you identify as male or female? It has books that attack race and religion. It has a book called "I Am Not a Girl: A Transgender Story", which is for children ages 5 to 11. Another book on the list is "What You Don't Know: A Story of a Liberated Childhood", that is intended for ages 10 to 11. This encourages children to distrust their families and even attack Jesus. Jesus is a prophet in Islam, so when you attack him, you do not just attack Christians, but Islam as well. How does attacking us bring inclusivity? How does it bring individuals of diverse backgrounds together? Your plan seeks to emotionally damage students, which also make you a mockery of actual trans children. On a professional development day, a Mosaic representative presented to our teachers while making political comments throughout. A teacher called him out on it, and it made a very tense and uncomfortable training. It was so bad that Dave Casamento issued an apology email promising further review for better implementation, but there was no follow-through. David Casamento said in the leaked video that he discriminates against conservatives, and the representative for the Universal Mosaic curriculum didn't hide his politics when presenting to the teachers. Therefore, the political bias already shown is enough for the district to not move forward with implementing the Universal Mosaic curriculum. Many of us moved out of the city to give our children a better education, and we don't want NYC education here. And for parents like me listening right now, you have a right to ask your schools for a list of all curriculum and what supplemental material is being used. Casamento wanted us to stay silent. Ask your schools if Mosaic is or will be implemented. Ask your children what they learn in school. However, be careful. Many of the teachers, like at Clark Middle School, will tell your children to keep it as a secret as the parents are the ones that need to be protected from. Keep your personal and political agendas out of the classroom and expect the corruption to continue being exposed, because we all have our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elliott. Mr. Ballou? Mr. Ballou? B-A-L-L-O-U, Ballou. I'm sorry if I'm not saying it right.
I grew up here in East Meadow. I attended the Newburgh Road Elementary School, McClery, Junior High, and East Meadow High School. Back then, DEI didn't exist, and we got along just fine without it. There was respect for individuals and meritocracy. Not a checklist of this one, that one, or that, to see if they qualify. I'm not gonna rehash the comments that have been made, which are disgusting and in no way could have been taken out of the context, especially if you listened to the other speakers who participated in the ed camp. Besides firing Mr. Casamento, which should be done, this district should revoke, remove from the ed camp Long Island program because it is undermining traditional family values. Also, in this situation, what the taxpayers in this district are being put to? How many lawsuits are gonna come from candidates that Mr. Casamento and maybe his allies disqualify? Who, who was responsible for watching over Mr. Casamento? Is this Board? I didn't hear one Board member step up here tonight and say, "We should have been watching more closely." Is this how our administrators? Mr. Casamento laid out very clearly how he sabotages anybody, not only with conservative but with traditional values, from getting a promotion. And as I said, if you listen to the other speakers who participated in that program, it's quite clear he wasn't taken out of context. He was right in sync with them. Now, school board elections are coming up, and I don't think anybody in this room should forget that this Board abdicated its responsibility. I think you should come out and send them a very clear message, not only to vote out incumbents who didn't stand by the students and the taxpayers of this district, but maybe send a message with the school budget as well. Vote it down.
Mrs. Schmidt? Diana Schmidt?
Good evening. I'm a mother of three elementary school-aged children and moved to East Meadow at the start of my oldest entering the school district. We as parents, as taxpayers, as residents of this community deserve a list of all of the curriculum that is being used in the classroom, along with any other material and those used in special classes. It is our understanding that there are health educators and other professionals that sometimes present and speak with our children. We need to know the resources that have been used during those times. Teachers should not be teaching our children to look for things that make us different, to look for hate where there is none, to identify yourself or someone else as a perpetual victim, or to be ashamed of yourself because of what your ancestors may or may not have done because you share the same skin color. Teachers can teach children to just accept people, everyone, whatever it is they look like, who they worship, pray to, or have for as a family unit. Children are not born, children aren't born to not accept that, and it is not the teacher's job to instill that in them. It comes from the parents and the home. The personal and political agendas need to be kept out of the classroom and away from our children. While I accept everyone for who they are and respect how they want to live, I, as a parent, have my own way to molding my children with our morals, values, and faith. No matter what path they choose in life, they will be loved and accepted no matter what. And that is my job to teach my children, not the school district. The focus needs to be put back onto math, social studies, science, and reading, and our children need to feel safe and comfortable in our schools. We need to let the teachers teach and our parents parent and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Dr. Card? Oh, actually...
Very good. At this time, we'd like to invite a representative from Gersham-Gersham to the podium to discuss with the Board or to share with the Board the proto-card for...
Those are all the cards that were first... We looked and we, the people who, the people who wrote down... The people who wrote down "first commentary" were called, and we went through and we pulled out anybody who didn't write "first commentary" but who had something to say that was on the agenda. These are for the second commentary. Mr. Gers, if you please... You didn't, I'm sorry, Mr. Servitor, you didn't say you wanted to speak additionally. So, so you can... So then you can come up if you'd like to have three additional minutes. Is it regarding an item on the agenda, Mr. McKenna? Okay, go ahead. Mr. Serv, Mr. Servitor, you'll go after Mr. McKenna.
Hi, I'm glad, I'm sorry. Thank you for remembering my name. My name is Kevin McKenna, and I'm broadcasting this live on Nassau County NY News. Yeah, but nobody really watches your livestream because they can't find the link on your website. I get a lot more views than you'll ever get on your website. Trust me on that. Very simple question. At the last meeting, I don't know how to pronounce your name. I don't want to mispronounce it, Ms. President. Baruch? Is that right? You talked about Mr. Kamata Tatis, whatever his name is. You said that he worked with members on a committee. Who, who are the members on the committee that he worked with?
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. That will be answered during the presentation. That's gonna be coming later on the agenda.
You're going to identify the members?
No, we're not gonna identify people. We're gonna explain the process. There's not one set number of people that are on any committee, and that will be explained.
Why wouldn't you identify?
Mr. McKenna, that will be explained.
I just want you to know something, that the State of Massachusetts, a judge just decided case law and ruled against the State of Massachusetts. They're gonna have to pay because a Board tried to shut down a Speaker because you didn't like what I'm saying. You can't stop me from speaking because...
I'm not trying to stop you from speaking, sir. The answer will be provided to you.
Because you don't like what I'm saying, you can't tell me to stop.
The answer will be provided to you during the presentation that is upcoming. Thank you.
My second, I'm not finished. Okay, you're using my time. I would like to know what consultants you utilize, and I'm sure everybody here should want to know. You get superintendent candidates and you get Board member candidates, especially superintendent candidates, from an outside consultant. And I would like to know what outside consultants are sending you your superintendent candidates. Thank you very much.
Mr. Servitor?
So we'll get back to the budget, because like I said, we need money. Oh, that bothers you, Ms. Baruch? So, we'll talk about some more money again. So now we'll talk about the pre-K program, which is gave a presentation in April of 21st, Dr. Card. I have everything documented and written down, right? Timestamped. And Dr. Card had said, and the Board went along with it, that it's $5,400 per student. That's what we were given from the state for $900,000. And when I looked up that grant, right? It's actually $10,000 per student that's supposed to be paid for from the state grant. It specifically says, has that in the state grant, pre-K expansion grant. $10,000 per student for qualified, certified teacher, which you said you had, okay? So if we took that $900,000 then, and we took out the 10% for training, right? That would be about $890,000, which would cover 89 students, not 180 students. And I kept pressing you, how are we paying for the other students? Where is the money coming from? And you kept insisting it was all in the grant. And here's the best part. We gave a third-party vendor free rent, free utilities, free custodial services, free security, right? And a free lease. Which, I don't know where any third-party vendor gets free anything without paying for it. And everybody up there, you weren't there at the time, everybody up there went along with it. Nobody said nothing. Everybody was in conjunction with it and with all the BS that yous did to sell the pre-K program, right? So then what you did, you turned around later on, and you got more money after March, and you didn't tell us about it until Dr. Card slipped in June, alright? That you got another half a million dollars, and you increased it by 36 seats, and it was supposed to be up to 280. So here's the problem with the pre-K, because you mentioned the building. I have no problem with pre-K. I have no problem if people vote for whatever they want to vote for, and they can pay whatever they want. I lose, I lose. I have... I lose, I lose. I have no problem with that. The problem is, we used the pre-K program to justify a $5.54 million building at McVay, that the parents at McVay were told it was for space needs. That's what you put on Proposition 2. But Mr. Pizzo, in his affidavit, his sworn affidavit to the New York State Supreme Court, County of Nassau, specifically stated three times it was for pre-K. So you lied about that, too. So what's the agenda? And then you picked vendors, you picked certain vendors, but not all the vendors. You picked vendors that would teach the way you wanted them to teach, to push your socialist, democratic agenda. So don't tell me it's political. You want to get those kids as young as you can and do what you want to do, and we're paying for it. Finally, in August, Dr. Card admitted that we only paid for 21 students, and the best is my buddy, Ms. Baruk, she gives me the most information. She said, "Oh, no, we rolled over the whole old pre-K fund with no authorization from anybody."
Thank you, Mr. Servitor.
So how could we trust you with anything?
Thank you, Mr. Servitor. That brings the first public commentary to a close. I don't have any other cards for the first commentary. I see a hand, I'm sorry.
I didn't know on my card that I could walk on the first commentary.
Well, it has to be on an item on the agenda. What's your name?
I'm Vanessa Carlson. Is it the audit? Or is it the agenda?
What audit?
The audit that we just had with the overtime and the financials.
No, that would be second, that would be second commentary. If you're in here, we'll get you, we got you.
At this time, I would like to invite --
That's a board of commissioners that are on your agenda. That's a board of commissioners.
At this time, I'd like to invite our representative from Gersio &amp; Gersio to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Matthew Maynard. I'm a partner over at Gersio &amp; Gersio. I have been an attorney for approximately 20 years. Reason I am here tonight is to speak to all of you with respect to an investigation which my office has been asked to undertake. I have -- I'm here because I'm the attorney that's been assigned to conduct the investigation. Just so that you know a little bit about me and why I'm the one doing the investigation or having been assigned to do it is this. I have, in my approximately 20-year career, I have conducted hundreds of workplace investigations, both in the public and the private sector, both in school districts, other municipalities such as towns, villages, cities, as well as in private sector businesses, both national and local. And so my experience in this regard is why my firm has asked me to conduct this investigation at the district's request. And so that's a little bit about who I am. I was also asked to just give you an overview of what the process will look like. I'm obviously aware of the existence of a video involving a district employee in which he made several remarks. There's also an accompanying article on the Project Veritas website, which I became aware of about a week or two ago. I reviewed the article, I reviewed the video. At this point, I'm at the very infancy of an investigation. So what that means is, I'm in the process of collecting information. So it will be a process in which I review relevant documents, which I will obtain either through my own independent research or through information requests from district personnel or third parties. And then from there, the next step is typically to speak with witnesses. Now, the scope of this investigation, as I understand it, and if the board wishes that scope to expand, restrict, change in any way, the board will advise me. But it's my understanding that the scope of the investigation is whether or not, in connection with the statements that were made, whether any policies of the district were violated by any of the conduct that was implemented or indicated through the statements made by this district employee. In addition, and as an offshoot of that, because the district's policies, generally speaking, are drafted to comply with New York State and federal law, there will be some review on my part in terms of whether the conduct that I'm looking at complies with both policy as well as my understanding of the law, as it relates to whatever particular issue I'm looking at. So, you know, I wish that I could give -- one thing I want to say upfront is, in my experience, investigations sometimes take on a life of their own, so it is entirely conceivable that I will be looking into particular items and realize that I need to broaden the scope of what I'm looking at, interview additional witnesses. So one thing I want to be clear about is, I do not have any sense of how long that will take. I don't want to have any illusions about that. So with regard to who and what I'm going to look at and who I'm going to interview at this point, I think beyond the obvious, I don't have that yet because this is the infancy, I've just been retained to do this. So over the course of the next couple of days, I will very clearly have a list of people I want to speak with, documents I want to review, and I will be undertaking to do that in as expeditious a way as I can. Some of that will, of course, be dependent on the individuals with whom I need to speak, at which point, once I've concluded my investigation, I will then prepare a report, which I will submit to the district and its council for the purpose of rendering whatever fact-based conclusions I can. Again, that is going to be based and/or limited inherently by whatever information I can or cannot obtain. If there's information that I'm unable to obtain because I'm not a judge, I can't subpoena things, I will certainly note that for the board so that the board's clear about what limitations there may be. And from there, I can provide any additional information. But I want to be clear, that will be the scope unless I am told by the board or given direction that the scope is, needs to change for some reason. In light of that, if anyone on the board has any questions about at least process that I can answer at the moment, I'm happy to do that.
I have a quick, I have a quick question for you. I'm hoping you could hear me. The scope of your investigation is obviously, as you stated, to look at the video and the comments that were made in the video. I want to make sure that I understand properly that will include the district's hiring practices as well.
Yes, absolutely. That's, that was certainly one of the issues that at least I've sort of highlighted in my own mind, that was, there was a clear comment made with respect to things that may or may not be done in hiring practices. So one of the things that I certainly will be looking at is, what are those practices? Historically, what have those practices been and how have they, how have they been implemented, not implemented? And as I said, there may be some limitations on how far I can go with that, for reasons I think I will be in a better position to explain later, but, you know, I will do the best that I can and endeavor to go as deep as I can on the issues. And where I can't, you know, the board will be made aware that I can't and why.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So --
Is Gersio your law clerk already?
Thank you for coming tonight. I just have a -- thank you. I have a question for you, and thank you. So in the end, because we've never done, I've never been involved in this investigation of this nature before for a school district, and so I'm seeking to understand, and maybe the community as well, in the interest of complete transparency and -- sorry, it's beating back a little bit.
Yeah, it might be my phone being too close to the mic. I apologize.
In the interest of transparency and the maintenance of a high level of trust with the East Meadow School District community, what is the usual procedure for reporting these results back to the community so that we have the information?
So typically, when I've done investigations in the public sector, as is usually the case, I am retained, whether at this firm or where I've been in the past, my law firm is retained by the board. So when I produce a report, my report is to the board or to the board's council as the board designates. So to the --
Please, I really want to hear his answer. I don't know either. Okay, thank you.
So to the extent that I am given a direction about where a report is supposed to be filtered, posted, distributed, I follow whatever, you know, I work for the board in this regard. So whatever direction I'm given, so --
Go ahead, we can hear you.
So to the extent, so when I produce a report, it is produced to the board. If the board wishes to share that, that's a decision made by the board. That's not a decision I get to make.
Okay, and so should the board, should the board so choose, can they authorize you independently without us to distribute that in channels that you see fit?
So one thing I want to hesitate on and, forgive me, there is, there are two different things going on with that question, and so let me be clear about that. The board and the school district has its general counsel, which is Mr. Raniere and his firm. Your question, I think, is calling a little bit for legal counsel. I am not the district's attorney. I have been retained to conduct an investigation, and so in that regard, I am not the board's representative. That's Mr. Raniere and his firm. So I hesitate to answer your question because I think some of it requires an analysis and potentially advice, which I shouldn't be giving.
Sure. Yeah, I understand it, thank you, because I just, I didn't know what the process was, and I think I'm seeking to, and everybody here, I'm sure, is seeking to understand what the process is. So thank you very much.
I understand, and I don't mean to not, but I, you know, I want to be clear that, you know, when I'm answering these questions, I'm answering it with my sort of investigator hat, even though I am an attorney.
Okay, thank you very much.
In your investigation, will you be interviewing those who were turned down for positions?
So -- So that is a really good question, and one I asked myself earlier today, as I was trying to get a handle on what I thought. Wow. Okay, so my answer is, that is certainly on the table. That requires me to, I need to get info -- wow. I need to get information in order to be able to do that. That is certainly something I am considering doing. I just need to be able to figure out that there is a period of time here that we're looking at. So, you know, the answer to that question winds up being, okay, can I, can I obtain information? Does it lead me to need to have those kinds of conversations?
I would ask you to please do that.
Okay.
Are there any other, are there any other board questions or comments? No? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
What's next, the hiring process? Oh, yeah.
You know, we got to say something about --
As a reminder, this is a meeting of the Board of Education, and it is a meeting of the Board of Education that is held in public pursuant to open meetings law. I need to remind you that we have business that we need to get through, and we would really appreciate your cooperation in keeping the chatter down so that we can hear what is being said and everybody on the board is able to digest the information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Dr. Card and I will be reviewing the hiring process this evening for instructional and administrative staff here in the district. So we're going to start with instructional staff. So the hiring process starts with notice that there's a vacancy. So that could be through a retirement, it could be a new position, it could be a resignation. But once we learn that there's a vacancy, we do post a position. And we post a position on, internally, via email, and we do post it on OLS, which is the online application system sponsored by Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses. So this is a typical posting that we would put out. On the left-hand side is the internal posting we send out via email. On the right-hand side is the posting that we would put on OLS. So once the posting closes, we do share those resumes with the Personnel Selection Committee, and that's a committee of administrators. It can be principals, assistant principals, directors, chairpersons. It really depends upon the position that we're looking to fill, but it's a hiring committee of administrators. And then those administrators will then review the resumes and decide who they would like to invite for a committee interview. Now, in some cases, they could have a screening interview if there's a large number of candidates who are applying for the position, or if there's, you know, just a few candidates, like, let's say it's for a chemistry or physics position, then we would, they would go straight to a committee interview. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Card to discuss how the Hiring Attributes rubric could possibly potentially be used in that interview process.
And just for a point of clarification, in hiring teachers in our district, the people who engage in that practice are our building principals and our directors. Central administration does not participate in the hiring of teachers in the district. Here's why. Prior to coming on board in this district, hiring was a unilateral decision made by the superintendent of schools. When I arrived here in July of 2017, one of the first things Mr. Russo and I did was put together a hiring process, a process that was made clear to both the board and to our building principals and our directors. Here's why. Having served as a principal in other districts, I believe philosophically and educationally that the decision to hire teachers should be made at the building level by the person responsible for the supervision of those teachers. So one of the things that I hope we will discover from the investigation is that that practice is solid here in East Meadow, just to be clear. The second part, the second part --
Excuse me, as we stated, we're here to hear this presentation, and we need you to please keep your comments quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Hiring processes for instructional staff, as I indicated, are done by the building-level principals. A rubric was created by the DE&amp;I committee several years ago. However, the rubric was distributed to our principals and directors, and they were told that they can use if they decided to. I don't think the rubric was ever used. But just so that you know --
Isn't that what the investigation is supposed to find out, whether it happened or not? Why are you deciding already before the --
We are not in public commentary right now, and Dr. Card has the microphone. Thank you.
I'm going to make an editorial statement. It seems to me that you're here to collect information, but no one is willing to listen to the information. And, you know, what we could do is, we could just simply mail this out to you and you could read it. Since you're going to sit here and yell at us, well, then I shouldn't be wasting my time.
Maybe you should listen. We're not allowed to ask questions.
No, we're not in public commentary. I am presenting. It would be polite --
When is the Q and A?
Excuse me, could we have a security guard stand next to him? Because if he opens his mouth again, I'm going to ask that he be removed.
As, excuse me, as a reminder, as a reminder, this is a Board of Education meeting that is being held in public. We want you to all be here to hear what's being said. We asked for this presentation to be done so that you could hear what our hiring practices look like. So we are asking you to please sit quietly and listen, and possibly some of your questions are going to be answered over the course of the presentation. If not, you have the ability to email or call tomorrow and ask any clarifying questions that you might have. Thank you. Thank you.
I will continue. The rubric, one of the attributes is personality, and if you look in the column that says exemplary, some of the items that we may look. No, some of, we will have this posted on the website.
All of our presentations are made available on the website, where you will have the ability to print and look at all of them. Thank you.
And perhaps if you give me an opportunity, I might read it to you. Exemplary includes actively listens to. Exemplary includes actively listens to others, seeks out different points of view, articulates what they've learned from past failures or challenges, demonstrates how they've changed their behavior as a result, seeks out new challenges and learning opportunities, and reflects and improves on previous experiences. Another attribute is quality of instruction. In the category of exemplary, and you'll notice I'm not reading unsatisfactory, growth areas, or proficient, because one can deduce from exemplary what would be the criteria for not being rated as exemplary. Candidates demonstrate an understanding of all student needs and provide specific examples of differentiating instruction for all learners while maintaining high learning expectations for all students. Again, quality instruction, candidates provide examples of monitoring individual student learning throughout a lesson and provides immediate feedback. Candidates use both formative and summative assessments to monitor individual student growth. And some of you might be sitting wondering, how might we evaluate these things if and when the rubric is used? Just so that you know that every teacher who moves through committee and is selected as a finalist by building principals and directors must also undergo a demonstration lesson. In other words, the teacher is put in front of, the teacher candidate, that is, is put in front of our students, and our students are also contributors to the hiring of that teacher. Moving on. Quality instruction, I won't be repetitive, but moving on to student-teacher relationships, exemplary, the applicant identifies in detail the relationship and the continued achievement of growth. Applicant describes in detail strategies implemented and challenges encountered. Professionalism, exemplary, consistently participates, applies, seeks, leads, and engages in improvement of practice in the professional development of colleagues to support school goals and improve school climate. Describes how they apply their learning and its impacts on other stakeholders in the school community. Provides leadership and/or leads professional development for colleagues to support school goals and approve, improve school climate. And lastly, actively seeks new and/or different ways to develop themselves professionally. The hiring process for instructional staff, the committee will invite select, I'll turn this back over to Mr. Russo, sorry.
All right, thank you. So, so after the interview, the committee will invite selected candidates to participate in a demonstration lesson, and as Dr. Card indicated, um, he shared it with you already. It says, if applicable, because if it's, let's say, for example, if it was a guidance council position or social worker position, there may not necessarily be a demonstration lesson. All right, so after the demonstration lesson, the committee will be, typically will be at the point where they're ready to recommend finalists for the position. They will then, uh, submit the Personnel Selection Committee Summary Report and have the candidate fill out the application materials and also check references. So this is the Personnel Selection Committee Summary Report. They will, at the top, this is where they rank the candidates. Let me just see if this is going to work here. Right here is where they're going to rank the candidates, and down here is where the committee members would sign. And then this is, this is our, uh, telephone reference check form. So at this stage in the process, candidates will be recommended to my office using that , the committee form. Once they're recommended to my office, we do a certification check, we do a fingerprint check, and then I interview the candidates. So the only cabinet administrator who's meeting with candidates is myself. At that point, after I meet with the candidates, I, if I agree with the committee, I'll make a recommendation to Dr. Card, and Dr. Card will then review the candidate's paperwork using this form that we have here, and then Dr. Card will make the recommendation to the Board of Education for approval. All right, so the hiring of administrative staff, this is, uh, it's a similar process. If we have a vacancy, we post a vacancy. Again, we do it online, internally, we'll send an email to all staff, or we'll, we'll post an online on OLAS. Cabinet, once the, once that posting closes, cabinet administration will review the resumes for principal and director positions, and then cabinet administration, and you typically the building principal, will review the applications for assistant principal, dean, and chairperson positions. Those are building-based positions. At that point, once we review the resumes, we will then make a decision, like who we want to invite to submit a Flipgrid video. And during COVID, we had difficulty bringing in and screening candidates for positions, you know, for obvious reasons in terms of meeting with people in person. So we did use, started using Flipgrid videos, and Flipgrid videos are where candidates basically create a short video where they're responding to screening questions. Then what we do is we review the Flipgrid video, and then we would, then we decide who we want to invite to the, um, committee-level interview. So the committee-level interview is a committee that's comprised of three teachers that are selected by the teachers' union, three administrators who are selected by the administrators' union, and one cabinet member. I am also on the committee. I don't vote or anything, I just basically run the committee and the process. The candidates are then ranked in order of preference based upon the committee, uh, ranking. So this is, again, this is the Personnel Selection Committee Form. That's the ranking form in the middle here. This, let me just see here. This is the ranking form that we use, where the committee members will rank the candidates.
Can I interject real quick?
Sure.
And so on the video, you heard Mr. Dr. Casamento say, uh, we do this in secret. What he was referring to is that. Once again, you want information, you got to allow me to speak. So the ranking at the committee level is done on paper without names. There's an accumulation of points for each candidate, and based on the points that each candidate receives from all seven voting members, they're ranked in order from one to the total number of candidates in. Each candidate is ranked from one to seven or eight, and the top four cand. The top four candidates then meet with central administration, which includes myself and all my cabinet officers. Upon completion of that particular interview process, two candidates, if it's for a principalship or a directorship, are brought forward to the Board of Education for selection. Point of information, since I've been here in this district, we have only hired to date two principals. Both principals were assistant principals in the district. Assistant principals who have been hired since I've been here have been chairpeople in the district. In other words, we have had a in-house selection process, and we have promoted from within. To date, there are only three people, more information so you can make a decision. To date, only three directors were hired from outside of the district. Our director of guidance, our director of social studies and library media programs, and our director of facilities, who has since moved on to another district. In essence, we've only, in the past six years, hired three directors from outside of the district. Moving on. As a point of clarification, once again, teachers are hired by the building principals and directors, not by central administration. As a point of clarification, so that you know, in the past six years, and this will come out vis-a-vis the investigation, any teacher that has been recommended to me by a building principal and the directors have never been rejected. That's a fact. So moving on, the sheet on the board. The sheet on the board are the documentation that's actually used in our process. Mr. Russo? Oh, I'm sorry, was I supposed to continue?
No. Well, you kind of, all right. So, so as Dr. Card indicated, the next step in the process after the committee-level interview is meeting with the superintendent of schools and cabinet administration. We interview the top three to four candidates and that are recommended by the committee. And then the finalists at that point, they complete the application materials, they do a writing sample, we check references, we check certifications, fingerprints. And then at that point, the superintendent will recommend candidates for assistant principal, chairperson, and dean positions to the Board of Education for approval. And Board of Education interview, the Board of Education will interview candidates for principal, director, and cabinet administration positions. And that, that's pretty much the process. Is there any question from the Board of Education?
I do, I have a quick question. I'm sorry to go all the way back to the very beginning, just for an example, if you could explain in step two of the hiring process for instructional staff, um, you know, you said that there, the Personnel Selection Committee can be made up of different people depending on the position that's open, which makes complete sense, but using, just because I like a nice example, using the example of the earth science teacher, would you be able to give us an example of who might be on that specific committee?
So I would say with the earth science position, you would have, you more than, you'll probably have the building principal, the chairperson for science, as well as a director for math and science. Now, an assistant principal could be part of the process, but that really, it depends upon who's available, it depends upon when we're filling the position. Like, right now, we did put out a posting for positions that we anticipate having to hire for. If everybody's available, then for, let's say for an earth science position, you potentially could have, again, a principal, director, assistant principal, principal, chairperson. However, if we're filling a position over the summer based upon availability, it could be a principal and an assistant principal who are doing interviews, it could be a principal and a director, it just depends upon who's available. So there's, there's no hard and fast rule in terms of who would be on the committee, but we, we generally would like there to be at least two administrators, if possible.
Thank you. And then, so now if we could move forward to the administrative process, when a committee is selected, I want to make sure that it's understood, right? So if, if, I'm just picking, because it's easy just to pick one position to use, if an assistant principal is being hired, the committee process will have representatives from multiple, will it have, who, who sits on that committee? A committee to select an assistant principal. I'm using just as an example. You need to turn.
So the committee for hiring an administrative staff member, let's say an assistant principal, would be, again, it would be three, it would be three teachers from that building. So let's say hypothetically, we were hiring an assistant principal for Meadowbrook, hypothetically. Then we would have three teachers from Meadowbrook who would be selected by the union. We would have three administrators who are selected by the administrators' union, that, that's their choice. Typically, if it's, if it's an assistant principal position, typically we would like to have the principal of the building on the committee, but I still do leave that selection up to the, uh, union. Myself is on the committee, and then a cabinet member. I, I don't vote.
You don't vote, right? You're non-voting.
I just basically run the meeting.
So in terms of a committee of seven, it would be three from, three from one union, which is chosen by the union. Central administration does not dictate who sits on that committee. It's chosen by the union. And then three committee, I'm sorry, three members of the other union, also chosen by their individual unit, and only one cabinet member.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you.
Excuse me, we're having a conversation, sir. Do not interrupt. No. Write it down. Write it down, sir. Excuse me.
Mr. Servitor, if you email me tomorrow, I will type out exactly what I just told, what I just said.
Anywho. There was a question asked earlier about, um, the hiring of minority candidates in this district. One of the reasons why we instituted a hiring process was based on my observation when I got here six years ago. Not necessarily the makeup of the teaching staff, but the feedback that I received from both parents and administrators in the district. As I indicated, there was a unilateral decision-making process in the district wherein the hiring was left in, left in the hands of the superintendent of schools. It is my belief philosophically and from a professional perspective that in order to cast a wider net, you need to bring in more participants into the committee process. And that is what we did. And instead of only relying on a local pool of candidates, we extended our reaches beyond the borders of East Meadow, beyond the borders of Nassau County, and invited people to apply for positions in this district. But because we casted a wider net, did not necessarily mean that we subverted the high-quality expectations for teaching in this district. Our data is evidence that our teachers are top-notch. I'm, I'm not finished, sir. Sir, we could, sir, if you want, if, sir, I'm, I'm living evidence of a minority candidate. So we could, we could parse that out however you feel. The point is, I'm giving you information, and the information is that we have a hiring practice in place, as well as a board goal, that says we will cast a broad net in order to bring in more candidates into our district so that we can hire individuals who are reflective of the students who live in this district. If you want. That is not, that is not true, sir. If you like, I will send you an email tomorrow with our teaching staff. I'm not talking, I'm not talking. Sir, I'm not talking about that either. Anywho, tomorrow, if you like, Mr. Jasmine, I will send you information about our staffing, okay? We have your number. Anywho, the point that I was making is. See, information is a dangerous thing, because the more information you have, and. So I'll turn it back.
Are there any further questions about the?
I had, I had one other question.
Dr. Lewis has a question regarding the hiring practices.
My question, Mr. Russo, and I think that this question, I'm purposely, I have no voice. I'm purposely asking this question for the benefit of the community, so that, because I think it's important to reiterate. This, these committees, and I know that you've illustrated the various components that go into the committees. I just want to reiterate. Are these committees consistent members, or are they changing for each case?
They change for, we, we're talking about administrative?
In any hiring that you're doing, are the committees consistent, or are they changing during each process?
They cha, the members change for each process. But, but, when it comes to cabinet administration, that's consistent. When it comes to, when it comes to teaching positions, that can vary depending upon the position, depending upon the building. But when it comes to administrative positions, the, the teachers and the administrators who are on the committee, that continually changes, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Actually, I'm sorry, I need to, we need to go back. Would somebody like to make a motion? Excuse me. Yeah, just let me, I just want to make sure I get it right, I'm sorry. Would somebody like to make a motion to appoint the law office of Gersio and Gersio LLP to serve as special counsel to conduct the investigation at the direction of the district's general counsel? Dr. Lewis second, Dr. Eckers, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing, thank you. I apologize for that.
Oh, Mr. Russo is up to do a presentation on program and staffing.
So, so I'm back. And so, switching gears, I'm going to be presenting on the staffing instructional component of the school budget for the 23-24 school year. Now, when it comes to staffing, we have four broad categories of staff. We have administrative staff, elementary instructional staff, secondary instructional staff, and non-instructional staff. For administrative staff, we have central office administration, building-level administration, and district-wide administration. In this area, we're not projecting any changes. However, at the, with the instructional program, we are, at the elementary level, we are projecting a need for additional general education and special education classes. At the secondary level, we have the need for an additional self-contained class. We also have the need for additional sections due to student course selections. And we have the need for additional E&amp;L classes at W. Trespa Clark High School and East Meadow High School, due to increased enrollment. So, we'll start with elementary staffing. And when we make elementary staffing decisions, we do use our class-size guidelines. They indicate that we should have 22, we'd like to have 22 students, or we try to maintain 22 students at the kindergarten level, 25 students in grades one through three, and 27 in grades four through six. The projections are based on March enrollment data. And the projections and the sections that we have here are reviewed throughout the summer. Alright, so we'll start with Barnum. At Barnum, we are projecting an increase of four students. It's pretty much, you know, the same year-over-year. However, we are going to have the need for one additional class. At Bowling Green, it's down, they're down one student, but that changes on a daily basis. So, Bowling Green will be, will be up two classes as well. McVeigh, they're up 10 students, as of now. We're also projecting the need for two additional classes at McVeigh. Meadowbrook's down, they're going to be down about 34 students. We are projecting the need to be down one position at Meadowbrook. And at Parkway, we'll be down 10 students, and we're not projecting any staffing changes there. Alright, so, our classroom teacher summary, we are projecting to be up four teachers. We're projecting to be up two self-contained classes. And when it comes to elementary staffing and the special areas, again, we're projected to be up two positions. However, we did, also did budget for two contingent positions because there may possibly be a need for some additional ICT classes, so we have to look at that. Alright, at secondary level, we do look at our projection, we do look at the projected enrollment and student course selections tends to drive staffing at the secondary level, and we do review this as well. So at Woodland, we're projecting Woodland to be down about 43 students next year. Clark Middle, down about 24. East Meadow High, eight. This changes, you know, East Meadow change, this could change on a daily basis. So it's eight, but, you know, essentially they're pretty much the same year-over-year. And Clark High will be up about 35 students. So in terms of our projections, in art, we are projecting to be up .4. Again, that's based upon student course selections. Business, .9, same thing. E&amp;L, those are the two positions I spoke about earlier. That's based upon increased student enrollment. Health, .4. Phys ed, .8. Science, 1.1. Social studies, .6. And special ed, that's the additional self-contained section. So, this is the breakdown of the 7.2 positions by building. And our final category of staff, non-instructional staffing, we're not projecting any changes here. So this is the summary. We also do budget for three general education teaching positions, classroom teaching positions, just in case we have some additional students who come in over the summer, which is typical. And that's something we definitely have to watch over the summer. This is our secondary staffing, I went over this already, so I'm not going to go over it again. And, alright. So, switching gears, I am going to go over the curriculum instruction budget codes. These are the, we call these the 2000 series budget codes. So the first budget code in the series is the 2100, is the 2000 code, sorry. That includes equipment, curriculum development, supervision, supervision of adult ed, research and service training. This, this budget code is up by 5.78%. And that's because, if you go back, you'll see that this does, this budget code does include supervision, which is our administrators. So, we just recently did settle the administrative unit, unit contract. So, this right here is capturing two years of, of, two years of salaries that we're now budgeting for in 23-24, because we just negotiated those contracts. So you can see it is up 5.78%. Alright, so the 2100 code, this is the bulk of our teacher salaries. It also includes academic coaches, after-school activities, textbooks, field trips, travel conferences, supplies, substitute teachers, and home tutoring. This budget code is up again, 5.9%. This is a similar situation. Last year, we did settle a teachers' union contract. And we budgeted, we, the salaries in the contract weren't finalized till towards the end of the school year. So this budget today, this budget here reflects the 21-22 and the 22-23 salaries. So we have that 5.9% there. Okay, 2200, that's our special education code. Again, we have special education, teachers, textbooks, BOSI's tuition, special needs school tuition, consultants, instructional supplies, contracted employees and speech services, instructional salaries for business education, and BOSI's tuition. So, as you can see, it's interesting to note that our, our enrollment from March of last year to March of this year went up by 228 students. So that, that's, that's, that's a sizable amount of students. And the special education population went up by 78 students. And that represents 14.3% of our population. So this code did go up by 11.72%. It went up, again, we have, we have salaries in there for special education teachers and business teachers. We also do have tuition for students who are attending out-of-district placements. We also have BOSI's tuition, so that's factored in here as well. And we did, we do have an additional 78 students. 2300, this is our summer school programs, there's no changes here. 2600, this is li, the librarian salaries, so this is library and computer-assisted instruction. So we have the librarian salaries, automation, books, subscriptions, supplies, video conferencing. We also have instructional technology. We have technology, technology staff salaries, equipment, software, BOSI services, fiber optic network maintenance, and staff development. So, this code did go up by 4.69%. And the final code is 2800, which is pupil personnel services, athletics, and co-curricular activities. These are our guidance counselors, clerical staff, online college and career software, guidance services, the nurses' salaries, medical needs, equipment, non-public school services, psych, psychologist's salaries, testing materials, social worker salaries, coaches, team equipment, chaperoning, section-eight fees, and officials. So this did, this went up by 4.18%. That's due to the contractual increases, plus we also have to pay for the out-of-district student health services, as well as athletic equipment for our students. So that pretty much wraps up the 2000 series code. And overall, it did go up by 7.1%. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any questions from the board? Out of, out of, out of district health services, that's if a child is, has an out-of-district placement and they need either a nurse, or an aide, or anything.
And I, I think we also have to provide service, private schools as well. I think we have to provide out-of-district services for students.
Thank you.
Who go to private schools.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Nope, great, thank you.
At this time, Dr. Pizzo will present on revenues and give us a summary of our overall budget in preparation for board consideration of adoption. Dr. Pizzo?
Alright, thank you, Dr. Card. Okay, so this is our, our fifth section of the, the budget that we are presenting. We do, of course, break it down into sections to go through each component. Okay, we did talk about, about state aid. Yes, we've had a, an increase in state aid, and that's, the breakdown is reflected here. Understand, with state aid, some of it is expense-based. That may, means it's, you're going to get back a percentage of what you expend. So that's why you will, will sometimes see adjustments as you go along. You will also see with expense aid, there is a, there is something that we will project out, knowing what we've expended, and that will have cap calculation. So that is something that we keep an eye on and we'll project. And that's why you'll see a differentiated year that we anticipate and disclose. Sorry, here is the, here is the summary page that we have. And that you can, that you can see that breaks that out. Okay, here is, there's some items here that I would like to, to go over quickly. These are some calculations that determine what goes into our aid. You will see here the combined wealth ratio. Okay, this has been dropping for us, okay? That means that the, the wealth in the area is, is being assessed as being, as being on a decrease. So that's, that's something that we've shown from year to year. So, these are the numbers, I present the numbers as, as, as they, as they are in reality. The next number, free and reduced lunch, that's going up. And that's, that's largely tied to those wealth ratios. This last number that you see, that 30.97%, we have talked a lot about the additional resources that's coming from the state, and that's welcome. What that is, though, is a repayment of, of what was already promised from the, the settlement for the Campaign for Fiscal Equity. So that's really bringing us back to where we should have been. This is not largesse that we are now getting. Also, you will see here that the percentage of our budget, which is attributable to state aid, is 30.97%, which is welcome, it is an increase. But that still means that the majority of our funds are still coming from the local levy and some other resources. So it is up, but I think it needs to be put into context. Okay, we do like to include, if there's any tuition from other districts, this is something that doesn't have an impact on us. There is nothing that was received in that area, but we do have that slide every year, so if there's a change. These are some health fees, which again, does not have an impact on us this year. But here's an interesting piece, looking at interest income. We've seen a, a change with interest rates. Okay, we had those very low interest rates, and every year, when we would come and, and express what our, what our income was for the interest that we earn on funds that we have in our accounts, it would be a very low number. Understand, we have to be fully collateral, collateralized, so there's a lot of requirements in regards to how we invest our funds. So it was a very low number. But here's some good news. We do have, we do, we are doing much better, and we are capturing a vast increase in regards to the interest that we're able to get because of changing market conditions and doing our due diligence to try to make sure that we realize every resource that we could potentially realize. So it's kind of a, a silver, a silver lining to, to some of these issues in regards to inflation, that there are some impacts that we do try to maximize any benefit that we can get. Okay, leased spaces, leased spaces, that's back, that's mostly, it's really at this point, just the back of this building, where we have some tenants. Relatively flat, a slight increase that we, we had for one of our tenants is reflected here. But every dollar counts, so obviously, we're always looking to, to capture everything we can if we have space available. We have, again, this is not a back and forth, I'd like to make the presentation, please. The reserves that we're covering now as part of the presentation are now listed. Okay, here's, here's the details of our, of our reserves and the balances. This is not a mystery. All of our financial information is posted on the website. So anything that we do financially is completely transparent. This not only goes back to when I started in this position in 2016. I actually went and found the financial information for the years before and posted that as well. So we're in full compliance, plus we are more transparent, because it's a good idea, I want you to see this information. So any person who's ever called me about a financial question, or about our reserves, or any other issue that we're doing, the information's available, it's public information, and I will answer any question and have answered every question in every position I've been since I've been here. And this information is, this, this is. It's hard to yell over you if we have other, if people here want to actually hear this. My, all of, everything that I have is backed up and is publicly available. If you were to look at the, the, the reserve balances here, it is, it is in our financials, and it is disclosed there. You will see capital, you just see that on the last line. That, that is where the, when we did the access, the capital reserve for the building at McVeigh, that is the reason why that number is lower than last year, which is reflected in the financials, which are, which is required. Here's our revenue summary. And if you look at our, our revenue summary, yes, this, this captures some of the advantageous items that were, that were mentioned throughout the day today. And this is all here, it is all transparent, and this, and this presentation will be, will be put on our website, along with all of our other, other presentations. So here's the breakdown, if, again, I answer every question if anyone would like to call. But here is the exact information as we know it today. Okay, here's now going through where we are in regard to our budget. As you can see, we're showing from last year to this year. We're showing our tax levy increase of 2.84. We're showing a budget-to-budget, that's the money that will be expended, of 4.06. So that is, that is what we have. Okay, proposition one is what we will, will be our budget approval. Okay, proposition one is what we will, uh, will be our budget approval. And we do have, um, a contingency budget. We have not had a contingency budget, I believe, in, in sometime over 40 years at this point, but we are required to do that and present it for our taxpayers to see. So here is the way a contingency budget calculation would work. And this is a more detailed breakdown. And again, I know it's tough to see when we have it on the screen. I put a lot of information on these slides because I want to include everything, because I know it's going to be posted later. So it's just a matter of that we don't want to omit something, uh, from the presentation, but when you can look at a presentation afterwards, posted on the website, all of this, if it raises a question, call, and I'd love to speak with you. And here's the re, uh, remaining timeline as we finish our process and go forward to the, to the vote on the 16th of May.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Pizzo. Does anybody have any, on the board, have any questions? Ms. Whitman?
Okay, so as I understand it, the proportion of the East Meadow School District's tax levy paid by the homeowners is dependent on the adjusted base proportion. Has there been a shift in the equation this year?
What was that mean? I'm sorry, I was...
The, the, uh, tax levy paid by the homeowners, uh, that's dependent on the adjusted base proportion. Is there a shift this year?
Okay, what we set is we set the levy. Um, so what we're, what we're doing when we show, um, our levy calculation is we're going, we actually go and bring a statement to the, uh, to the town and to the county, which states, these are the dollars that we're looking to assess. Now, when you're looking at anything in regards to when you actually receive your, uh, your, your statement in the mail about taxes, how come it doesn't match exactly what we have? That's because you have four different areas of taxation, which will be, uh, which will be determined not by us here in the district. We set the levy, we don't set the apportionment.
Okay. And what is the difference, like, say, the past three years after COVID? What is, was there a tremendous shift there?
We have, uh, we had for several years, seen a shift where, um, where single-family homeowners, like you and I, I live in the district as well, that we did see a shift away from commercial and, and to, uh, and to class one, which is, uh, which is, uh, single-family residence. Uh, but again, we have no control over how those apportements are done.
Thank you.
I didn't want to jump on you if you were still asking questions. Are there any other questions from the board? Nope? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to, um, adopt proposition one to fund our school programs and facilities, as well as the tax report card for the 2023-2024 school year in the sum of $230,954,055? Mr. Melnick, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Russo?
So, um, we do have a, uh, a second reading of policy 8411, Transportation for Students in Foster Care. This is a new policy, and the policy addresses the process the district would follow when providing transportation for students in foster care. So tonight does represent a second reading of the policy, and if approved by the Board of Education, the policy will become part of the policy manual.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt policy, um, tran- transportation for students in foster care? Ms. Whitman, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. There's no change from the first reading. Is that correct, Mr. Russo?
No changes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All in favor? Six, nothing. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the CPSC and CSC approvals?
No.
What? No?
No, no.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the CSC and CPSC approvals? Mr. Melnick, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items F1 through F12? Ms. Napolitano, second. Ms. Whitman, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items G1 through G6? Mr. Melnick, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion?
Just as a, uh, point, there is a scholarship, I believe, in this? Okay. Yes, yes.
I usually say it after we approve it, that's why you, you...
Yes.
You can go ahead if you'd like.
Oh, okay. So, thanks. I just, uh, usually as a Board of Education, we like to point out when people are generous. And, and let me tell you, people in East Meadow are, are generous in terms of giving their time and, in this case, their money. Um, and so tonight, we are approving a scholarship. This is the Ken Seppi Concert Band Scholarship. Um, so we would like to thank, um, is the Yang family, the Yang family, for sponsoring this scholarship, which will go to, uh, our high school students for, for their use. So thank you very much.
And if anybody knew Mr. Seppi... Mr. Seppi was one of the most amazing band teachers that this district has ever had, and we went to a, when I was in the high school, we went to a Broadway show, and we happened to have front row seats, and I peeked into the pit, and we said, "We're from East Meadow High School," and they said, "Do you know Ken Seppi?" That's something to, to know about, Mr. Seppi.
Absolutely. So for those of us here who went to school and had him as a teacher or knew him, we, we appreciate it.
Thank you. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Oh.
We should definitely go down.
That brings us to public commentary period number two, which can be about any item. It does not need to be, it does not need to be about anything that was on the agenda, but it does need to pertain to schools. Um, we have, again, just to go over, we have a 30-minute period for, um, for public commentary. You'll be invited to speak for three minutes. If there is time after everyone has spoken and you still wish to speak, we can call you up for an additional three minutes. Um, we will start with Mrs. Riley. I'm trying to get the time. Eight, nine, fifteen, okay.
Now that we've all seen the power of censorship, I hope to see young people in our district considering a path in journalism so that more truth can be brought to light. Isn't it true that DEI is a condition of the American Rescue Plan? Isn't it true that the ARP also affected hiring criteria, as well as influenced students to be more focused on their gender and sexuality? Isn't it also true that the ARP encouraged schools to develop partnerships with medical entities such as Northwell Health? Child sex change surgeries, hormones, and puberty blockers have become a rapidly growing multimillion-dollar industry. Hospitals and physicians are generating huge profits when children go into transition. There is no question that financial rewards play a huge role in this socially engineered construct. I'm passing around this chart tonight so we can all clearly see where the equity is and how it got there, because it looks to me that this district spent more time making these people rich than it did educating students about their civic duty, or the true reason for inequality, which is greed. It's greed! The richest 1%, they're hoarding the rest of the world's wealth. Their profit is not honest. They got it by exploiting people. Recently, I saw these little African kids digging in the dirt for cobalt for $2 a day for the batteries for our kids' phones. Then I saw sweatshops in China that assemble the iPhones. Imagine these people had the same rights and opportunities that we have. How significantly their lives could improve. Why aren't we fighting for that kind of inclusion when they make so much of our stuff? When they are suffering for our comfort? Imagine this chart represented water. Would that be okay with you? On February 14th, the Senate Judiciary Committee held a hearing about protecting children online. It became clear to me that there are multiple industries waiting in the wings to exploit their natural curiosity. The frontal lobe of a young person's brain is not yet fully developed. They tend to make decisions out of emotion and impulse rather than experience and reasoning. An expert testified that the time spent online changes the way that their brain grows. Today's technology is highly sophisticated, and huge profits have been made by getting kids addicted to phones. These sexual topics that they see in the classroom and in graphic books naturally stimulate them to seek out more media for more stimulation, because they're at that age. It is self-serving, instant gratification, feeding directly into their reward system. With this, they become vulnerable due to their sexually heightened suggestibility. They become easier to exploit. It could be as simple as suggesting more content. It could be used to lead them into a compromising situation, like all of our political leaders, or it could even bring true harm, such as being trafficked, like many coming across our border right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Goldstein?
Kindness, acceptance, inclusivity. Choose to be kind. What a wonderful mural facing our audience. Kudos to the children and faculty that created such an incredible message. So, I'm somehow fascinated with national days. Just so happened, I looked to see what today's national day was, and I'd like to share it with the board, hopefully that they can then share it with the audience. Today is World Day of Metta. World Day of Metta takes place every year on March 22nd. The occasion is to remind humans about love and acceptance for others and themselves, while also taking a moment of quiet introspection. Metta is a principle under Buddhism that encourages all people to practice unconditional love and benevolence for all beings in the universe. Organizers of this holiday request that people everywhere contemplate, meditate upon, or pray to offer Metta to all living beings in the world, regardless of your faith. Take this day as a chance to reflect on the power of love that can change the world and introspection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldstein. Um, I apologize if I mispronounce this. Mr. Garu, Derek, G-A-R-U-H? I'm, I apologize.
I just want to recognize the Nassau County Police Department for keeping us safe. Thank you, guys, for being here and our security. Genuinely, thank you. My name is Derek Garcia, and I come as a parent of five incredible children. I also come, yep, I know. I also come representing my siblings and their husbands, the Garcias, the Grandins, and the Cardenas. We are East Meadow homeowners, and combined, we have 10 cousins who are all attending or will be attending the East Meadow schools very soon. Just today, we all celebrated with my sister and my brother-in-law, and their son got accepted into UPK. Uh, my son Timothy is on his way out. Collectively, we are just a small part of the very, of the combined conservative families that make up this incredible town. Yep. I would just like to address three points. And the first is an apology. I want to apologize to my children and my family and my neighbors for not attending these meetings in the past. I deeply apologize for not getting to know the candidates well before voting for them, and I believe that these past events have a silver lining, in that it has awoken a deep conviction in my family and neighbors to never let our voice and concerns for our family values go unheard again. We are not the enemy, and if you were to ask any of the teachers at Parkway, where four of my children attend, I pray that they would reflect that the Garcias are allies, not an enemy. Secondly, I want to thank all the parents and advocates who have attended and been vocal about various school matters in the past. You have been bold and passionate. Yeah, give it up. I have truly been inspired by your dedication, and I have cheered you over the YouTube livestreams, and even you, Mr., sir, I mean, yes. My family and I all speak about you and your boldness. We might not always agree on everything, but thank you for speaking up, and thank all those bold parents for speaking up as well. It's easy to make comments from the living room or wherever we're watching these meetings, but I would say thank you to the parents. You've carried a large weight on your shoulders. You have my respect and my gratitude. And lastly, for all those running for future school board positions, I can't wait to meet you at the next Meet the Candidate Meeting forum. I want to state for the record that conservative is not a dirty word, and standing up for family values is a noble and worthy pursuit.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Please help, please help ensure that the schools teach reading, writing, and arithmetic, and leave the value trainings to the parents who deeply care about our children. Thank you. There was a lot of clapping. I had it three minutes.
I would like to go back to the PV video that we all watched and were notified about. Timestamp 7:13, question, if you had a conservative candidate and you figured it out right away, what would happen? 7:18, I would rank, we do everything by committee, I get a vote on that committee, it's all secret. I would rank them so low that their score couldn't possibly raise them up to the level making them onto the cabinet. 7:29, which I get another stab at it because I'm on the cabinet. 7:34, and I get more questions, and I can figure out how to draw that shittiness out of them, which hasn't happened. So now, I'm going to read the email dated March 10th, received at 12:30 PM. Good evening. I wish to inform you that Dr. Casamento has administratively been reassigned and will not be in any district buildings. As stated at the Board of Education meeting on March 8th, the district will be conducting a thorough investigation of this matter. Question, relating to this hiring practices, who is on the committee for the superintendent position? Who are the votes for that position? Who are the ones doing the interviews from 5:30 PM to 7 PM? The hiring practices you showed us tonight does not prove that Casamento did not do what he said in the video. It is what's on paper. It does not improve, it does not prove what he said. Question three, if Casamento, question two, sorry, I took my first question out. If Casamento, prior to this March 8th video, was on the committee for the superintendent in hiring, is he still on the committee now, even though he has been administratively reassigned? And if he was, are you starting over? Question, how do we know as a community that his personal hiring practices aren't now putting the hiring superintendent in jeopardy of discrimination? Was Casamento involved in the choosing of the open board seat in December 2021, which I did apply for and I did not get? Now I'm going to jump to March 16th, 2023, letter to the East Meadow parents and residents. First paragraph, as trustees and superintendent of schools, we have important conversations with members in our school community regarding our district's curriculum, hiring practices, and policies over the course of the past week. We greatly value the input of our parents, staff, members, and community residents. My question, when did you have these important conversations with the members of the community? Who were the community members that you had these conversations with? Were they teachers? Were they parents of children in the school district now? Was it with parents that had children graduated already from the school district? Next, I want to move to March 16th, the letter to the current board members and Dr. Card...
I'm sorry, Ms. Perez, thank you.
Okay. If there's three more minutes, can I come back up?
Yeah, and I have your questions written down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Miss... Rabbi Barnacum? Rabbi Barnachum?
Good evening to the school board, to those who celebrate a Ramadan Mubarak. My name is Rabbi Daniel Barnachum, and I'm the rabbi at a local congregation, many of whose members are residents of East Meadow, and many of our students attend the East Meadow Public Schools. I am here tonight to speak in support of the current Board of Education and applaud them for following and implementing the state-mandated culturally-responsive sustaining educational framework. As the state highlights, the framework seeks to create student-centered learning, and research shows that diversity and diverse points of view lead to better decisions and better outcomes in business. Challenging our biases allows people to thrive and achieve more because it forces us to grow beyond ourselves. I am an educator by training, and in my role as a leader of and member of a minority group in this community, I can only hope that focus on affirming cultural identities and developing communication across lines of difference will continue. This is important to me as a rabbi and as a Jew because I know that my community is most in danger when we don't learn about difference. Our community is most at risk when people spread conspiracy about us rather than facts learned alongside us. I can only surmise that had we previously focused more in this way, there would have been fewer issues with antisemitism in the East Meadow schools. DEI education, or CRS education, seeks to fulfill what our tradition refers to as the great principle of scripture. Ve'ahaftele recha kamocha, love your neighbor as yourself. And our Christian neighbors know this as well because the Gospel writers also have Jesus repeatedly reminding his followers that this, loving our neighbors, is the greatest of the commandments. What does it mean to love your neighbor? It means to have empathy for them. It means to understand where they come from. It means to recognize the differences and be enriched by them, not frightened of them. And none of this can be achieved without learning about our differences, acknowledging them, and honoring them. I am here tonight to speak for CRS education because the Jewish Americans, the Asian Americans, the BIPOC Americans, the Christian Americans, and the LGBTQ+ Americans in my community and in the East Meadow community all deserve to be treated with equality, dignity, empathy, and respect. What a beautiful community we have that honors all the traditions holidays. What a beautiful community we have that seeks to foster understanding through dialogue and education.
He has 14 seconds left. Thank you. Keep going. You have 14 seconds.
What a beautiful community we can have if we allow ourselves to continue on this course, educating students to be members of the community as it exists in all its varied hues with respect for and understanding of everyone's inherent worth. That's the community I want to be a part of, and that's the community that East Meadow ought to be good for this Board of Education.
Thank you, Rabbi Barnachum. Ms. Klein? Ms. Klein?
Hi. As an East Meadow School District graduate, I'm here to speak out in support of my high school chemistry teacher, Dave Casamento. I have never gotten up to speak at a school board meeting because it is nerve-wracking, and the current toxic environment only makes it more so. But I couldn't stay silent as a beloved teacher is wrongly vilified by people with an extreme right-wing agenda. If Mr. Casamento only made us memorize the periodic table and didn't develop such positive... The behavior here is appalling from adults. Okay. If Mr. Casamento only made us memorize the periodic table and didn't develop such positive, genuine friendships with his students, I likely would not be standing here today. To see his comments about forming relationships with his students twisted and taken out of context to give the false impression that he was doing anything predatory or unseemly is disgusting and shameful. If only these hateful extremists felt any sort of shame. Instead, they will destroy a good man's reputation and career with their grossly deceptive video and propaganda. Mr. Casamento was the only openly gay teacher I can remember from my time in this district. At a time before gay straight alliances or official supports for LGBT students existed, his presence mattered. Representation matters. Genuine care and concern for your students matters. All students. The best public schools are diverse, equitable, and inclusive. They look out for the most vulnerable kids. That's a good thing. I have family and friends who also wanted to be here to speak up in support of Mr. Casamento, but they were honestly scared. You can see why. We can't allow bullies to turn our community meetings into circuses. They may be loud and belligerent, but they are certainly not the majority. I hope my presence here will inspire more decent people to speak up. Otherwise, we are setting a really dangerous precedent, allowing bigots, extremists, and conspiracy theorists to infiltrate our public education system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. May I remind everybody that everybody here gets three minutes to speak. Yelling at, yelling at one another does not help this matter at all. We are one community. Everybody has three minutes to speak. Please, please. Mr. Rondazzo? Mr. Rondazzo? Joe Rondazzo? Okay, I'll move on. Christina Cambria? Christina Cambria?
How you doing? Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I realize I'm kind of late here in the game. I promised to listen tonight. That was part of kind of my, my statement here. I know it's a little contradictory as I'm up here talking, but it, it just seems like everybody wants to talk and nobody wants to listen. I promised to listen tonight, and which I did. So without that, you know, sorry, it's my first time speaking in front of a huge group of a pretty volatile crowd here. So the East Meadow Union Free School District adopted their mission statement long before I became a resident, which was only in 2019. The first three bullets of that statement are as follows. Acquire the knowledge and skills needed to lead a productive, responsible, and culturally-enriched life in the 21st century. Develop attitudes that reflect empathy and caring for others and respect for the differences and diversity in our society. Understand our cultural heritage and the need to participate in the community as an informed and involved citizen. I actually moved to this district because I wanted my children to grow up with diversity. I grew up on the North Shore of Long Island, surrounded by people that all looked like me, and it didn't prepare me for the real world. Anyway, the mission statement speaks to the goal to teach and implement the diversity, equity, inclusion framework before it was even created by New York State, where all students are seen, represented, and available for learning. By sending children to these schools or by accepting a position in this district, all residents utilizing the schools, all administrators, teachers, and staff should be striving to meet this mission statement in all they do. Any reasonable and knowledgeable person knows that teachers follow learning standards in every discipline. Even those who homeschool must acknowledge and verify that all learning standards are taught. Health education, where much of this discussion of topics that include diversity, equity, inclusion happens, has an entire document created by New York State to achieve these learning standards at the elementary, intermediate, and commencement levels. Within those guidelines, there are skills and functional knowledge that health educators make great efforts to achieve from elementary through graduation. The skills and knowledge include, but are not limited to, relationship management, decision-making, advocacy, sexual risk, tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, family life, and sexual health. Age-appropriate teachings go on in all subjects, and health education is no different. There is nothing covert about the skills and functional knowledge that are taught in New York State. In fact, you can find them right on their website. DEI, which is mandated by New York State Education Department, is often misunderstood. It is frequently met with resistance at the mere mention of its initiatives. In order to represent all students and all of a student, representation needs to be included in all areas, not limited to sex, race, family structures, culture, religion, sexuality, identification, et cetera. Educators are not teaching students how to be gay, how to identify, how to transition. Educators are teaching students skills and knowledge to keep themselves and others safe and healthy, as well as positive contributing members of a broad community with different cultures and customs, and being inclusive, equitable people regardless of what differences they may have. This is public education where everyone deserves to be seen and represented.
Thank you, Ms. Cambria. Thank you. Mr. Laino, L.A.I.N.O., Mr. Laino?
I'm going to be short because you already wasted our times by coming here tonight, having to deal with this bullshit. First of all, I'm a combat veteran, served eight years in the United States Marine Corps. All right? And I talk about my service because everybody up here, you're supposed to be serving this community. Every single person's community. Not your beliefs or what, or what you want to put onto our children. So first of all, I really want to say, I, your service, was that, were you in Baruch? You were right there, the president? You are absolutely so condescending to the people that you're supposed to be serving. How dare you? And to you over there, I don't know, we didn't come in here to yell at anybody. I came here to listen as well, and I did listen. I didn't need to be named of, what do you call me, extremist? I'm a fiscal conservative Republican. I am very center-right. I believe in many things, but I will not be called any names by these lefty, batshit, crazy fuckers.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Yarkin? Ms. Yarkin? Lucy Yarkin? Ms. Lucy Yarkin?
Hello, how are you? I'm here again. It's not on the agenda. So I'm asking for my bus. Please give me a bus to Woodland School. At the middle school level, in accordance with the Board Education policy, students residing greater than one mile from the school are eligible for transportation. Eligibility is determined by a survey that we have here. Company using the shortest route from the student's home to the nearest access onto school grounds. Our child, Katrina Yarkin, has been denied bus transportation because she is deemed to reside less than one mile from the school. For us, Woodland Middle School is using the nearest access point onto school grounds from the house, which is at the rear of the school fields. As per the survey provided by us, to us by the Assistant Business Administrator, our house is 5,200 feet from the access point at the near of the fields, which is 72 feet less than a mile. However, to my best knowledge, this rear entrance to the school has been closed for a month and a half. How is my child getting to school? Is she jumping over the fence or what is she doing? So if she's supposed to walk around the school like the other walkers do now to take the path to get to the back of the parking lot in Woodland, that gives me more than a mile now. Since this rear entrance to the school is now closed, the shortest route from our residence to the front of the school building is, in order to entrance the school, is 1.7 miles, obviously much greater than the one-mile eligibility requirement. Providing normal bus transportation for my daughter and my younger daughter when she goes to Woodland would not require any special transportation. Bus, as the bus stop is about one block from our house, obviously much closer to our home than having our child walk 1.70 miles to the nearest available entrance to the school grounds. I was here in October. I was told to get, to share a transportation with other parents. I don't have anybody. On our street, no one lives. The children are not there. We live across the street from the fireman's hall. I don't have anyone. I do have a bus, as Mr. Card found out, for my 504 for my daughter. But that does not work out for me in the afternoon because she does not get the time for the bus.
Thank you, Ms. Yarkin. I'm sorry, Ms. Yarkin. I need to move on.
I can't get the bus because my daughter's bus comes home at four. And I have to be at Woodland to pick my other daughter.
Thank you, Ms. Yarkin.
What am I supposed to do with my third grader who is coming off the bus?
Mr. Holman?
Where's Dave Casamento now? Is he being paid? Is he doing any district work while he's been administratively reassigned? In a letter, in an email back to me, Ms. Baruch said, "He cannot be suspended without a hearing." New York State Education, Department of Education says differently. Right of tenured employees. You can bring a motion to vote to suspend him. You can. But you won't. You won't. Nancy stepped up and gave us her view. We applaud that. Thank you. Appreciate that, Nancy. And I bet if Nancy went to put a motion to suspend Dr. Casamento, it wouldn't end in None of you have the guts to step up and do the right thing here. It's as clear as day. Secondly, this DEI mandate thing that you guys are allegedly saying is factually incorrect. It's an initiative that was brought on in April of 2021. They encourage school districts and local school boards to get behind this. The tenant of this that coincides with the CRS learning is their systemic racism, and we should be apologetic to that or aware of that. That don't jive with me. That don't jive with me. Yes, Mr. Jasmine, there is racism. You're right. But it doesn't live in my home.
Mr. Holman, I'm sorry.
And it doesn't live in a lot of these homes.
Mr. Holman?
And I think it's terrible. But guess what? That guy or that girl that's racist, he's an asshole or she's an asshole. You got me?
Please watch our language.
That's on the family value structure that we're talking about.
Mr. Holman?
That we're talking about, right? The need to build family structures, to have a comprehensive, strong bond between parent and child. And it shouldn't be interrupted for anyone or anytime. Mr. Jasmine, I'll have a conversation with you in public. No problem.
Um, that actually comes to the end of our three minutes, 30 minutes. I did call up Mr. Rondazzo. I was been putting the cards, we have been putting them in the order that we got them. Would any board members like to make any closing announcements? Would somebody like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person?
Excuse me, I have been here since 5:30 for preschool lottery, and I think I could have three minutes of your time to tell you how I feel.
Second.
Everybody here waited the same amount of time.
Any questions? All in favor? All opposed?
This is you not listening to your community, and then you want...